Good evening. My name is Linda Whitmore, and I'm a member of several of the hosts for tonight. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters, also of the Richmond NAACP, and Black Women Organized for Political Action, BAWPA. We have two other hosts tonight. We have the Richmond Chamber of Commerce, and KCRT is producing tonight's event. Tonight's forum, Democracy in Action, will be moderated by Carolyn Weisinger. Carolyn is the mayor pro tem of El Cerrito. She has worked fiercely in the LGBTQ community in a plethora of capacities. She also serves on the board of the California Democratic Women's Caucus and the LGBTQ Local Elected Caucus of the National League of Cities. Professionally, she works as the Director of Outreach for the San Francisco Department of Police Accountability. Thank you, and I'm going to turn this over now to Carolyn Weisinger.
Welcome to our Richmond City Council Candidates Forum. Before we begin, I would like to review a few housekeeping notes. We have already solicited the questions. We are also providing an opportunity for our in-person guests to ask questions. As Linda spoke on, please raise your hand, and a volunteer will provide you with a note card and a pencil to ask your question. Let us know when you're done, and we will collect it and add your question to our questions list. The format of our event is that each candidate will be given time as follows. A three-minute opening followed by a series of questions, up to two minutes for your answer. The timer will be available on the Zoom screen. Candidates will be questioned by district. Once all of the candidates have had an opportunity to present, we will have a 10-minute lightning round with short questions to all the candidates with a brief 30-second answer. At the end of the lightning round, each candidate will have a two-minute closing. So having said that, let's begin. We are going to start with our District One candidates. Where is District One candidates? All right, these are everybody watching. These are our District One candidates. We have Jamila Brown, Mark Wasberg, and Melvin Willis. So I'm going to start with you first, Jamila. What can Richmond do to enhance and -- I'm sorry, we haven't got to the questions. We've got to do our opening. I'm a terrible -- blame Linda and Ruthie. I'm a terrible host, everybody. Jamila, please start with your opening, please.
Thank you so much. Greetings, everyone, and thank you to the organizations that made tonight's forum possible. My name is Dr. Jamila Brown, a proud fourth-generation Richmond resident of District One. Born at Brookside Hospital and deeply rooted in the Iron Triangle with a rich family history at Fifth and Nevin and Fifth and Pennsylvania. I attended local schools in the West Contra Costa Unified School District, shaping my early understandings of systemic challenges and the importance of advocacy work. Elected as class president at Kennedy High and during undergrad at Cal State East Bay, I had no real intentions on a political journey. I just wanted to step up, speak out, and help enact change for anyone within my reach. I became a mom shortly after high school, working full-time as well as attending college full-time. With much sacrifice, I finally earned a bachelor's in sociology, thereafter a master's in human development with an emphasis on educational leadership in human services, and then a doctorate in social work. A girl from the Iron Triangle, I overcame the odds and persevered despite adversity. These experiences equipped me with the tools to address District One's most pressing social issues, like the unhoused neighbors, the blight, and gun violence. I coin myself as a servant leader. My career and life experiences have taught me that when we deserve better, we demand better. And serving my community as the first councilwoman in District One, that will provide me with leverage for me to address and resolve the issues that affect us all, ensuring that your voices are heard and concerns are met with actionable solutions. District One, I want to let you know that I hear you and that I see you. And once elected, I will do everything within my power to ensure that we all see a better Richmond. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jamila. Mark Wasberg, please your introduction.
Mark Wasberg, I was raised in San Pablo. I went to Richmond High with Coach Carter and Andre Schumake. I worked in Richmond all my life. I was a factory worker. When the other factories were closing down, I was forced to go into a job trade. So I took auto mechanics. I was an auto mechanic for several years. Then I went to Chevron, worked at Chevron for about four years as a mechanic. Then I got involved with the violence here. I was with Schumake, Reverend Newsom. I was with Corky Bizet. We was all out there protesting against the violence. It was just a totally massacre what was going on in the Iron Triangle. It was bad during that time. Then I got into film editing. I'm a film editor. I do a lot of stuff around here in Richmond. The bottom line is, we need to make Richmond a better place. And the only way we're going to do that is to bring in big business and get these kids out of the gangs and start getting them into the trades right after high school. That's how you better a community. Now, I've been working with a couple of these nonprofits, trying to get some stuff going here so we can start saving some lives. I mean, the average kid right now is dying in Richmond is between 16 to 25, an African-American. I've been there. I've seen the blood. I've seen the homicides. I've seen the beatings. I had a ride along with the Richmond beating. I've seen it all. I even made a documentary about it. But the bottom line is, you put me in, I will do everything I can to make Richmond a better place. Because I know, I've been fighting the RPA for the last 15 years. I know how these people operate. And the bottom line is, we're just going to have to get them out if you want to make Richmond a better place. We need to educate these young kids. You need to get them right out of high school, because most of these kids in junior high school, they're starting noticing the world. All this gangster stuff, it ain't working very good for these kids. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wasberg. Melvin Willis, your introduction, please.
All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Melvin Willis. I was born and raised in Richmond. I grew up in a single-parent household because my dad ended up dying 12 days before I was born. So my mom raised me on her own, and honestly, she tried to prove to everybody that you didn't have to have a man to raise a man. You just need to be a good parent and surround them with love and make sure that kids had -- your young person had the tools they need in order to take care of themselves. Back in 2011, I ended up getting involved with a group called the Alliance of Californians for Community Empowerment, purely just for a job, just to be able to take care of myself. But what it forced me to do was actually get out into my community and do door-to-door work, just to simply ask people, hey, what are your issues and concerns? What are those solutions that you have identified? And do you believe in coming together to get power numbers in order to effect positive change? And that's pretty much how I try to approach any issue whenever I come across it in Richmond, is just saying, hey, what are those concerns? How are these concerns impacting you? And what is the solution that you're trying to pursue? And making sure people have the information they need to navigate our bureaucratic systems, because, you know, trying to come to City Hall and figure something out can be intimidating, especially if it's something that you're not used to, have never done before. It's been my experience before. When I first ran for Richmond City Council, it was in 2016. I honestly, I didn't say this back then, but I honestly didn't think I was even going to win. I just was one of the principal organizers to try to get rent control and just cause for eviction on the ballot. And that meant talking to a lot of tenants and seeing like what their concerns were and, you know, seeing folks who were getting rent increases that could have been double the original rent or just evicted because of personal grievances with the landlord. I even went and told people like, hey, you don't even have to vote for me, just at least vote for this, because for me, housing is a fundamental need that we all have in order -- that we all need in order to have a healthy lifestyle. And that ended up passing, and that year I ended up winning with the top vote. Since then, I was a part of helping increase the minimum wage to $15 an hour with the cost of living increase. I sponsored Measures E and K, which helped created the Department of Children and Youth and ensured that 3% of the general funds budget would go to youth programs and services, dedicated funding to youth programs and services. And also during COVID-19, I took steps to pass moratoriums on evictions, because it's too easy to become homeless and too hard to get out of that situation. I also helped pass legislation like hazard pay for workers who were working on the front line to ensure that they were being compensated for putting themselves and their families at risk. I'm running as a candidate that takes no corporate money, and I just believe in working with people in order to make solutions for our community.
Thank you so much, Melvin. Thank you to all of our candidates for your introductions. Now we will go into the questions. So we'll start with you, Jamila. What can Richmond do to enhance and develop the economy within the city? You have three minutes. No, two minutes, I'm sorry. I am nobody's -- I am no Lindsay Davis, I promise you. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you so much. What I feel that we could do to enhance the economy is very -- it's simple, but it's taking a long time to get there. I believe that we need to diversify our tax revenue in our city. We need to invest in our businesses. We need to bring -- invest in our businesses, our startup businesses, create plans for them to bring business to Richmond instead of driving businesses out, create a strategy where we can provide incentives for local startups, where we can also incorporate tax relief for existing businesses, and just overall create a hub and create an incubator where businesses can learn to apply for grants, learn to apply for various fundings that would help assist them with expanding their business. Also, working with the workforce development to develop skilled workers and to encourage the revitalization of some of our underutilized areas in Richmond, especially in District One, where we have a lot of areas that could be activated, but for some reason, they're
Thank you so much for that response. Mark, Mr. Wasberg, you have the floor. What can Richmond do to enhance and develop the economy within the city?
Well, first of all, you need to bring in big business and get these people trained. That's how you better a community. That's how you put people to work. That's how -- the more people to work, the less crime you have. We know for a fact that the RPA has stopped big business from coming in here. The tax revenue right now is totally a disaster for big businesses. They have some idea that all these small businesses is going to make up the difference. It doesn't happen like that. I hear time and time again, even they're taxing the heck out of Chevron. They passed Measure U. I mean, the companies filed a lawsuit to stop the RPA for raising taxes, and businesses are moving out. You don't better a community when big businesses are coming in, are not coming in. They have to come in. You have to get the trained workers. But until you start giving tax breaks to the companies, then they're going to start moving in. But the RPA is not doing that. They want to tax the Hades out of these big businesses to set up their welfare programs. We know for a fact, they did more for these homeless people that don't want to go out and work than they did having job opportunities, job training programs. See, this is the problem we have with the city council. They don't believe in big business. Time and time again, they wanted to put Chevron out of business, out there protesting. Chevron is multi-billion-dollar industry. They're the bread and butter for Richmond. And it's pretty stupid, you ask me. They're going out and attacking Chevron every five minutes. They want to close them down. They want to stop good-paying jobs. The bottom line is, we need to get the RP out. If you want to bring in good business here and get these jobs, get these people trained.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Wasberg. Melvin, you have the floor.
Yeah, one thing that -- and Measure U was brought up. That was something that I believed in even before we discussed it at City Council back in 2020, because when I was talking to businesses during my not-so-successful attempt to run for mayor in 2018, one thing that came up from small businesses is that they were discouraged to actually hire workers, because they were forced to pay taxes per worker, and it just became very burdensome to them. So I did support putting Measure U on the ballot, because the city was looking at different revenue strategies and a gross receipts tax that would be $100 business license for small businesses if you made less than $250,000 in gross receipts, and then a tier system based on what folks were made to help generate more revenue to the city, because for the longest time, we were just fighting back against cuts to services. Like, we had such a demand for services, and there was nothing but constant recommendations to cut them. So that ended up passing on a ballot with, I believe, over 70% of the vote. And I can say that I've actually seen new businesses open up under that progressive tax structure, because it's easier and incentivizes people to want to show up and create a business if they know starting out the business license is only going to be $100 for them, so they have a chance to grow. And on top of that, I would say also just evaluating our processes more in general, making sure that it's more friendly for businesses to apply and actually come in the city of Richmond, because one of the things that I have heard over the years that I do want to address is that there's barriers within going through the department and processes in order to open up the businesses. So I think evaluating what those barriers are and just making it more user-friendly for businesses and seeing exactly what their needs are and how we're accommodating to that and not creating any more bureaucratic barriers would be essential also to incentivize businesses to coming.
Thank you so much. And I'm going to do better, just to let everyone in the audience know. I've had the pleasure of knowing or working with almost everybody on this panel, and it is automatic for me to call them all by their first name, but I am being official today. So I am going to make sure to say, Mr. Wasberg, the next question, we're going to start with you. Richmond's Neighborhood Councils used to have a significant role in advising the city council and city departments. What do you think the role of Neighborhood Council should be?
Working with the community. Matter of fact, I went to the last meeting they had, and I talked to Oscar for a while, but I didn't seem to know the candidates there. I was the only one there. And Oscar was concerned about the violence. And I think more people need to get involved and come to the Neighborhood Council meetings, because this is your district. This is your neighborhood. You need to know what's really going on. I mean, right now, the Iron Triangle has been the most deadliest place in Richmond for the last 20 years, ever since 2004, when it was designated the most violent city in the state. And you people need to get involved and let the people know, let the police know on what's going on, because hardly anybody's there. There's about four or five people there. This is what I'm saying. You people need to start getting together. You need to start knowing your neighbors. You start getting to know the police a little bit better, so you can really know what's going on in the neighborhood. Because if you don't know, if something should happen, then where are you going to go? You need to know who your neighbor is. You need to contact, get in contact with your neighbors, you know, be friendly neighbors, get to know each other. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wasberg. Ms. Brown, you have the same question. How can the role of the Neighborhood Councils, what should that be?
Yes, thank you. I think the role of the Neighborhood Council is very vital within any community, because it's very difficult for working families or working persons to show up to council meetings that are late at night and go into the early mornings. So having a Neighborhood Council that's for a few hours out of the afternoon, I think, is doable. So I actually also have the opportunity to attend the local Neighborhood Councils, Belding Woods, as well as the Iron Triangle with Ms. Doris Mason, and to actually hear the concerns of the residents. I think that the Neighborhood Council is a bridging from the standard city council to the Neighborhood Council, to bridging the community with addressing their concerns. And many concerns that are coming up at the Neighborhood Councils are local concerns that are in the area. Like, there's been a lady that I've seen like over a year constantly coming to the Neighborhood Council complaining about not having any sort of traffic safety measures from Fourth and Pennsylvania all the way to Fourth and Barrett, where residents in that area are trying to play, kids are trying to play, school is letting out, and there's no traffic calming measures in that area. So just things like that, where a community member can't make it to the council to address it, they're able to go to the Neighborhood Council meetings and address it there. I believe that it just bridges the gap between where they can't make it to traditional council meetings.
Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Willis, your reply.
You know my sister, you can call me Melvin. Yeah, no, yeah, I don't disagree with any of the statements said. Neighborhood Council meetings should be that hub for community members to come to be able to address community concerns, and even those Neighborhood Councils should help be a bridge for community members, not only into addressing issues at City Council, but of course, if they can't make it, being liaisons to council member representatives, and not just even the district representative cells, because at the end of the day, council members are only one vote on this council, so you need at least a simple majority just to get anything done. So you -- one thing that I have done, especially with the Belding Woods Neighborhood Council, is they've had traffic safety issues and didn't really know how to navigate our system were the first steps to take. So I actually ended up arranging meetings with them and our Public Works Department and allowed them to invite whatever community residents they wanted to come to address those concerns, so we can actually start getting the ball rolling. And also, I forgot the name of the grant, but we did just do a focus group last week in the Nevin Community Center. It was part of a series of focus groups that were happening around the district that were also led by the Neighborhood Councils, really just publicizing those and showing up to those and hearing what residents have to say. And I'm always trying to get people to show up to council, and because we still have a hybrid format, to even call in and make sure that any issue that you're dealing with in the neighborhood is very vocalized and on record publicly, because the problem is, if we don't hear about it at the city council, then folks are going to be isolated in these issues. And I always see how this council and other boards have moved, depending on the will of the residents and the residents holding us accountable. Neighborhood councils could be a good tool for that.
All right. Thank you so much. And we're going to actually stick with you, Mr. Willis, for the next set of questions. Which political endorsements have you received so far? And how do these endorsements reflect your campaign's values and priorities?
I was recently endorsed by the Democratic -- DCCC. I've been endorsed by Central Labor Council. I've been endorsed by Firefighters, Local 188, Sierra Club, the organization I work with, ACE Action, also shout out to RPA. And really, what they mean to me is just, those groups have been doing decades of work in our community, fighting for improvements around racial and economic justice, making sure families have living wages, people are staying in their homes, and that there are programs and services. And those groups are serious about their values, and they're not looking to waste any time with anybody they don't feel like is a viable candidate, or if they don't feel like somebody's actually going to be a good representative or know what they stand for. After being elected in 2016 and still being able to get those endorsements, I'm honestly humbled, because it just at least lets me know, outside of my experience, that folks still at least have confidence in my representation when it comes to working with issues. Like, anytime somebody has an issue, I'm willing to like come to them and figure it out and figure out a best strategy to get a solution. Some of the things that we deal with at council can be nuanced, complex, sometimes have a funding source, but it is about just addressing the issue and finding out what are the common grounds that we can agree to in order to push for a solution. And part of the work that I've done to get some of these endorsements in the coalition is also because of the work that I do countywide and statewide. Like, countywide, I've advocated for the A3 program to be created, which is the Mental Health Crisis Response Unit, and also worked with labor unions to pass Measure X, which is additional funding for the county to go to supporting programs. One of those is a housing trust fund, and I know the Board of Supervisors did allocate money to a housing project from that fund, and that's from that organizing.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wasberg. Same question. What political endorsements have you received so far? And how do these endorsements reflect your campaign's values and priorities?
Well, I got $500 from this renters and relocate system, and that's about it. Big endorsement, huh?
Every endorsement is important, Mr. Wasberg. Trust me, I know.
It's enough to have some flyers in the mail. Actually, I use my own money, $608. So I'm doing pretty good.
Every dollar counts. Congratulations.
I got a pretty good reputation around here.
And I received a legal note, like on The View, and I do apologize. It's Dr. Jamila Brown. I certainly apologize for that. Same question. What political endorsements have you received? And how do those endorsements reflect your campaign?
You're totally fine. I've received endorsements from former mayor Nat Bates, former vice mayor council member Demolish Johnson III, former mayor Tom Butt, the local 342, the Boilermakers, Family Spring Psychology, and I've also invested in myself with loaning towards my campaign and local fundraiser, the community members believing in me. And what I can say about those endorsements, all of those endorsements are folks who believe in putting Richmond first, believe in putting the residents first, believe in helping families elevate Richmond residents to thrive. And what was, out of all the endorsements, you know, it's the small donations that were coming in from people who have never voted, thought about voting before, just getting -- just seeing the spark in their eyes and asking about getting registered and things like that. So just the local commitment is most dear to my heart, because in District One, we have such a low propensity voting threshold. The last election cycle, we, out of about, out of around 20,000 residents, we had only 7,500 registered voters. And out of that 7,500 registered voters, only about 4,700 participated in the actual election. So that just goes to show what this process means and what local governance means. And so I feel like it is just my obligation and my due diligence to restore the hope into our residents, to let them know that if we want change, we have to start by first getting registered, and also following that by making our vote our voice. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. We'll start again with the next question with you, Mr. Wasberg. What specific initiatives do you propose to address in the concerns that all voices are heard and represented in decision-making?
Well, you go to, oh, you come to the city council, you have the right to speak there. You know the mayor's going to cut you down anyway if you don't like what you say. But every American has a voice, and they have the right to be heard, no matter if it's in the city council, no matter if it's on the internet, or you're talking to a friend. So people are going to have to get involved. I mean, there's social media, and there's a lot of things that a person can do to hear your voice. Actually, protesting, you have the right to protest, as long as it's peaceful, not rioting. You have the right to walk down the street with your signs and protest against the government or anything else you want to protest, but as long as it's peaceful. But the people need to get together and have a voice. You do have a voice here in America, but there's some people here who don't want you to have a voice, like the RPA, who's been cutting me down for the last 15 years at the city council meeting, because they don't like what I say. That is communism, and it's going to stop, because I already told Aguado Martinez, you got one heck of a lawsuit against you. But you people could protest, come to the city council. You do have a voice, and you have to use your voice, especially what's happening in our government now. We've got a bunch of corrupt politicians up there in Washington, letting millions and millions of illegal criminals into the country. They're just tearing the heck out of our country, killing Americans, killing children. It's a disaster. And you have a voice, and you're going to have to tell these people it needs to stop. So come to the city council meetings, speak your piece, or do anything you can to get the word out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wasberg. Thank you, Mr. Wasberg. Miss, I'm sorry, Dr. Brown. Same question. Yes, I'm going to do that every time now.
I work hard. I work hard.
What specific initiatives do you propose to address the concerns that all voices are heard and represented in decision making?
Yes, all voices are extremely valuable, no matter what side you're on. All voices should be heard and respected. Also, by what was mentioned, establishing those clear channels of communication. We know that some of our younger voters, they don't turn out as much, 18 to 25. So we know where they are. They're on social media platforms. So enhancing those platforms as well. Simply being accessible, responding to emails, returning phone calls, attending those neighborhood council meetings where we can meet residents that are in the area. Also updating, you know, social platforms. I know there's a lot on the city of Richmond, but that could be confusing and not really easy to navigate. So just getting, you know, getting more out there and probably getting someone, you know, on staff that can relate or have more relatable content, have more breakdowns. You would just be so amazed, like during this campaign, this campaigning season, trying to explain district elections to individuals. And that was something that took place the last election in November 2020. So having to stop and say, hey, you know, although you live in the townhouses and you really like what I have to say, you can't vote for me. So having to break that down, I feel like that wasn't, I know we were in a pandemic, but I feel like that's still like even afterwards, was not really um really expressed properly to voters, even in today. Like, this is a district election. You can only vote for candidates who are qualified on the ballot in your district where you're resident, where you a resident at. So just like that whole mix up was a hindrance, but also just again, being visible in the community and again, heard through your voting. You have that right to choose who you want to represent you in District One. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Brown. Mr. Willis, your answer.
One of the things that I have been doing, especially after we did the 550 million dollar settlement with Chevron, is as I've been door knocking to people, hearing issues and concerns, I've been not only letting them know about simply just call in on Zoom that they don't even need to come here to voice their concerns, but just to use your two minutes just to address whatever issue is happening. We also have community budgeting forums that start happening before we do our budget cycles. So doing specific outreach and publicizing more, not just digitally, but also through mail or postcard, because we still do have a senior population that isn't necessarily technologically inclined. So making sure that we're reaching those folks as much as possible and getting that input. So whenever it does come to budgeting our priorities and figuring out what services need to go where, we're making an intentional effort to get that community feedback before we even release the draft. Another thing that we could do, you know, speaking specifically for me for the district, but I would advocate for this citywide, is actually organizing district by district community listening forums about issues that are facing the community and making sure that we have the appropriate staff, people within our departments to come out and answer any questions and concerns and also gather comments so that they're reflected in front of the entire city council. So we are making an informed decision. And it can go back to also working with our neighborhood councils to ensure that we have some sort of partnership with them, despite of any political differences, but that there's a general partnership with them to where we're able to funnel information to city council. But at the same time, one thing that we could do better and we could even work with staff administratively to do is publicize the neighborhood councils that are happening to the community more broadly, whether that's in a community report so people don't know about that can go to them too.
All right. Thank you so much, candidates, for your amazing questions or answers to all these questions. They are my amazing, no, they're the community's amazing questions. Before we go into the lightning round, I just wanted to remind folks, we are almost through with District One. You do have the QR codes that are available to ask questions. If you're here in the chambers, you can raise your hand. And I think that our team will come and get them, but Ruthie is giving me an ugly look, so maybe I'm wrong with that. But I wanted to remind you. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Lightning round is at the end. So now you're almost out of time to ask questions because we're going on to District Two. Thank you, District One. District Five. I knew that too. See, look, ABC will never hire me to moderate a debate. All right, District Five. So we do have Sue Wilson and we have Ahmad Anderson, who are our candidates for District Five. So we're going to go ahead and get started first with Ahmad Anderson. Please go ahead and give us your three minute introduction.
Good evening to all. My name is Ahmad Anderson, and I've lived in the city of Richmond all my life. Born and raised here on South Seventeenth and South Eighteenth Street in Richmond, moved to 55th, 1131 55th in Bayview, and eventually where I live now in Laurel Park. I've run for this office before. And although I did not win by being elected, I went back to work. I went back to work to find out what was missing from the equation to not only hear more of the voices of the people, but the people to vote for me, to elect me. I went back and became a part of the Youth Service Bureau, Youth Service Bureau on the board there. I did that because at the time in 1984, we had some of the highest crime and murders in North Richmond. I moved from there, from the Youth Service Bureau to be involved also at the Child Care Council. My thought process was that Child Care Council, working with working families, having someone there to be able to take care of them as they travel back and forth to work, also was connected to maybe even the rates of murder and crime in our streets. Having there's people there to support them and make it through day in and day out. In addition to that, became one of the youngest NAACP vice presidents at the age of 27 in 1987. I had an opportunity to be sent here from the city of Richmond to march with Andrew Young and then Senator Nunn, in Forsyth County with Isaiah Williams, where they were turning back the hands of time there in Atlanta, in in Georgia, where they weren't allowing blacks to move back into that community. I came back and continued to be involved, but even now on a regional level. I sat on the committee for Bay Area 2000. And in Bay Area 2000, led by Sonny McPeek, that supervisor at the time, dealt with building, housing, and transportation in the West County area, and building and housing and transportation from an environmentally safe perspective. I then went on to move from there to work in the community for the Richmond Chamber of Commerce. I worked in the community as a consultant for the uh employment development department under Salvaca, working under the former EDD Director of the State, Michael Burnick, working with the Welfare to Work Program, ensuring folks from this community could find jobs. The unfortunate piece that was, we didn't have the jobs here. We're sending people from City Richmond to other organizations in Berkeley and West Contra Costa County, but we didn't have the transportation. I became involved to run for BART because I realized that it was important to know that it was not just a city issue, but it was a regional issue. It was important to recognize, since we're neighbors, let's be friends. And in that capacity.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Unfortunately, you're out of time.
That's why I'm running for Richmond City Council.
Thank you so much. Ms. Wilson, you have the floor.
As a first time candidate, the thing that I want to convey most is that I love Richmond. I choose to live here because our community is amazing, and there is nowhere I'd rather raise my family. One of the reasons that I'm running for office is I want more people to see Richmond the way that I do. I was born in Detroit. I came to California 25 years ago to get a PhD in anthropology at UC Berkeley. But while I was there, I joined a union, and I fell in love with the union. And I and my husband, but reunion, we're talking about the union now. I went on to have a 25 year career in organized labor in which I've done almost every job that you can do in the union movement. I've organized new labor unions. I've negotiated contracts for teachers, for nurses, and for doctors. And I've taught a generation of young people the skills they need to do that same kind of work so that the movement carries on. Recently, I started my own one person consulting firm. It's just me. So I can continue to work for labor unions, but I also now work for nonprofits and for campaigns. But in everything that I do, I carry through a lesson that I learned as a union member and a union leader, which is that we have the power to improve our own lives if we work together and we fight for what's right. Since moving to Richmond 18 years ago, I've really tried to take that same lesson and put it into practice in the things that I do by working on many local campaigns. I have worked on the campaign to help pass rent control and eviction protection here in Richmond. I am continuing to work on the campaign to clean up toxic waste on our shoreline, including at the AstraZeneca site in District Five. I've worked on the campaign to tax large corporations like Chevron at a higher rate so that we can pay for better city services. And I also worked on a campaign to protect our immigrant community regardless of their documentation status. If elected, I will be continue, I will be able to help even more on these issues. For too long, our city council was influenced by large corporations, especially Chevron. In order to maintain my independence, I will accept no campaign contributions from corporations, developers, or business promoting interests. This will give me the freedom that is needed to make decisions that represent the needs of Richmond residents rather than the needs of outside investors. Having many local leaders in my corner will make me an effective representative representative for District Five. I'm endorsed by our current county supervisor, John Joya, our current mayor, Eduardo Martinez. I'm endorsed by a majority of the current Richmond City Council, including Gail McLaughlin, who is not running again for the seat in District Five. I've also received endorsements from dozens of independent organizations dedicated to environmental justice, affordable housing, and criminal justice reform, as well as most of the labor, local labor unions. I'm endorsed by the T, oh, they they trust me to do what's right on the issues that matter to Richmond voters most.
Thank you so much, Ms. Wilson. Now, you all have a lot to say in District Five. You just keep running overtime. But that's okay. I'm going to stop you. Okay. Ms. Wilson, I'll go ahead and and start the first question with you. What can Richmond do to enhance and develop the economy within the city?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, I think we are starting from a position of strength in order to do this because, as I think most of you know, our current city council, which we have two of the members here, Claudia and Melvin, recently reached an agreement with the Chevron Corporation in which Chevron is going to pay more than a half billion dollars in additional taxes to our city over the next 10 years. What that means is that we're not a wealthy city, but we're not a poor city anymore. And that's going to give us opportunities to provide better city services that I think make this a more attractive place for people to live and for people to open businesses, including, you know, so that's everything from like, you know, fixing the potholes and cutting the weeds to making sure we have a holistic plan for public safety so that people know that we're making great improvements in these areas. I think also, I we need to be very proactive about enticing the right kind of business to Richmond. There's certain things we're in desperate need of. We need green energy. You know, I don't think we want to be in the fossil fuel business forever. So we really need to find those businesses that are going to be moving us forward along green, clean energy lines. We need more grocery stores. You know, we need a lot of sort of things that I think are highly targeted. And we should be open to doing the things we need to do to incentivize those folks to come here. I think we already have a pretty strong city department that that tries to scaffold and support small business. But again, with the extra money that we now have, I think we can do even more. I'd like to see, you know, much more folks in small businesses who want to come in and navigate different processes. I think that we are on the right track of getting getting them what they need. But again, there's there's potential to do more.
All right. Thank you so much. Mr. Anderson, your answer, please.
Sure. I, as the former chair of the Economic Development Commission, I had the opportunity to see how measure you worked and how it didn't work. One of the concerns was really trying to find out, when we reached that threshold of the money, where was the additional money going? Was it being reinvested into the community? In addition, what Sue has said about the money we really recently received from, will receive from Chevron, I think there needs to be an oversight committee. Oversight committee to show transparency and educate and awareness as to where the money really is going to go. We have bills to pay. We are running at a deficit. So there are things that will come to the priority before it even gets to the community, to fill the potholes, to take care of the blighted communities, to take care of the staffing that we haven't hired for, to ensure that public safety is be able to respond to your calls, to ensure that the blighted and even the environmental issues are addressed in the city. I'd say to you that, you know, for not taking corporate money, I hear that from our leaders presently, but we just bought a company that's been polluting our community for another 10 years. So if we're not taking that money, then what are we doing to balance off the revenue in this city? I think we need to work with the Economic Development Commission, the Bay Area Economic Development Committee, Council, work on like cities that are similar to Richmond, to find out what works and what doesn't work, have an oversight committee that holds people responsibility, transparency, and make sure that we do not abuse that money. But we need to educate the folks about what the general fund is and how that works for the city. I know that there's staff who are looking for backcolas that have not been paid for them, and we have unfunded liabilities. We need direction and guidance from someone like myself, who's worked with the city, been involved, done the work in the community, and can reach out and touch you, and will be available to provide such guidance, insight, and support.
I don't know what our rules are about clapping. Are we supposed to be clapping? No clapping, the league says. But thank you for your enthusiasm. Mr. Anderson, we'll start the next question with you. Richmond's neighborhood councils used to have a significant role in advising the city council and city departments. What do you think the role of neighborhood council should be?
I think it should remain the same. The neighborhood council is the senile and nucleus of what we have here in the city of Richmond. I grew up in this city a long time ago when we didn't have neighborhood councils. In fact, we met in people's homes. We met in community centers. We met in churches. And that was how we mobilized to get in front of the city councils. City councils had stayed up as late as they stay up now, when we didn't have Zoom. But I think that it's important that in those neighborhood councils, that if I, as an HR person that I am, and I say to my managers all the time, if we held you accountable on what you earned or a bonus, or even getting elected again, that you, if you didn't attend your neighborhood council meetings in your district, that would be a mark against you. And we would note that publicly. And if your representative is not being there, how do you know that your voice is being heard? And so what I did like, as councilperson Melvin mentioned, was that we did have a recent focus group. And in the District Five, which I attended, it brought together the Panhandle, the Annex Area, it brought together East Shore, it brought together the Marina, and it brought together Laurel Park and East Shore neighborhood councils as well. An opportunity to sit together to hear each other and what they were doing. I also think it would be a responsibility, if although I'm in the District Five, to visit and have the okay from whoever city council individuals who are elected here in the other districts, to visit with you and meet with your group as well, not violating the Brown Act, but being able to intro and reduce myself. Because although I'm the city council member for District Five, I'm the city council person for the city of Richmond. So I need to be active. I need to be visible. I need to be involved and know what the people are talking about. That is the essence of empathetic leadership.
All right. Thank you so much. Ms. Wilson, your response, please.
So I think that the neighborhood councils are potentially, and probably formerly were and potentially in the future, could be a really important resource for Richmond residents for all the reasons that have previously been said, including for folks who might have difficulty making it to a city council meeting that happens later in the evening. It's an opportunity in their own neighborhood to meet with others and discuss concerns. The shortcoming, I think, our current neighborhood council system has now is, at least from my experience, going to some of the councils in District Five and having some familiarity with others in other districts, is that right now, such a small percentage of our residents go to the neighborhood council meetings or know when they happen. This is not to cast blame on anybody involved in the neighborhood council movement or or with the city. I just know as someone who wanted wants wants to and is going to visit all the District Five city council, neighborhood councils, you can't really find reliable information about when they meet and how often they meet and who to contact. And so what I think we should do, I mean, I would need to get some more clarity about how much the the relationship between the city itself and the neighborhood councils, and whether we could have some additional staff time, city staff time, to really sort of scaffold some of these neighborhood councils to help them get the word out about when they're meeting and where they're meeting and who to contact. You know, folks, you know, I know there's people in this audience who have the the communication skills for the city to send out emails to let people in the district know what's going on vis a vis these meetings. So I I'm optimistic about these these, the system, but I think right now, it's such a small minority of folks who go to those that I'd like to see that broadened, so we get a broader diversity of a that I'd like to see that broadened, so we get a broader diversity of opinion.
All right. Thank you so much. Ms. Wilson, what do you see as the responsibility of a council member in ensuring a safe community? And how do you see that being accomplished?
I'm sorry, what kind of community?
What do you see as the responsibility of a council member in ensuring a safe community? And how do you see that being accomplished?
Like a safe community. Sorry.
Oh, ensuring a safe community?
Okay, sorry. Okay, okay.
I'm sorry. I have to pick up the mic and move around.
We're the middle-aged candidates, so sometimes we drop a syllable.
That's okay. I'm with you there.
Hope I don't overstep there. Thank you. So ensuring a safe community. And so I think that what I bring to the table is an interest in having a really holistic approach to public safety. I think sometimes progressives on the city council get painted falsely with the accusation that we want to defund the police or that we are police abolitionists and don't believe police have a role in public safety. I do believe that police have a role in public safety, but alongside a number of other professional workers and departments that really help to contribute making the city authentically safe. And so for instance, I think we need to continue to invest in the Office of Neighborhood Safety, which I'm sure most of you are familiar with, which is a very grassroots, neighborhood-based, non-police approach to going out and preventing violence before it happens. Since the city council started investing more heavily in the Office of Neighborhood Safety, the murder rate in Richmond has dropped drastically. I mean, hopefully, you all know that last year Richmond had the lowest, its lowest murder rate in 50 years. It's not as low this year, but it's still a huge accomplishment. We're making big strides. And I do think that comes from not just having a police presence, but also really supporting these other programs. I'm extremely excited about a program that our current city council members, Claudia Jimenez and Melvin Willis, have supported, which is to create a community crisis response program. So that means for calls involving mental health that are not violent, they need help, but they don't necessarily need a person with a badge and a gun to come and help them. We're now gonna have trained mental health professionals to go out and take those calls. So for me, it is building this holistic system of all sorts of workers who can go out and respond to the various calls that come in with the appropriate level of intervention.
Thank you so much. Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I agree. Like, listen, defunding the police is a non-conversation for me. Because for any other reason, those most underrepresented communities have suffered still the most when it comes to murder, crime, and violations. I think the same reason that I became involved with the Youth Service Bureau is a similar conversation that Sue is having with us now tonight, is going to the root cause and being there and being involved in supporting families. I believe there's room for not only not defunding the police, but also wraparound services. I also believe that money that we talked about from Chevron can be used to talk about what that staffing looks like appropriately when you look at different zones in the north, the central, and the southern part of the city of Richmond. I also think there are priorities where there needs to be more attention. But you can't have folks in the police department, law enforcement, doing forced overtime. As an HR person and a people of culture representative, that affects your performance, your productivity, and morale. It was even told to one of the folks I knocked on the door when I was walking here in the area. They said, "I called the police," and they said, "We'd love to be there, but we just don't have the staff to respond to you." That's a morale issue, because that never should come out of the mouth of any officer. I get it and I understand it, but that's not where we need to be. We need to find a place where not only law and safety is protected and what they do as they serve and protect us as citizens. I think it's important to know what kind of funding's involved, working with places like the Association of Bay Area Governments, A-Bag, to figure out what other folks are doing to be able to improve the safety of mental health and behavioral services, as well as being able to staff. This is just not a city of Richmond issue. San Francisco and Oakland are going through as well.
Thank you so much, Mr. Anderson, for your answer. And we're actually gonna go on to the next and start with you. Which political endorsements have you received so far? I know you spoke to this a little bit, but if you can tell us a little bit more about endorsements you've received so far and how do these endorsements reflect your campaign's values and priorities?
Well, I've been endorsed by former mayors and city council here in the city of Richmond, Tom Butt, Nat Bates, Rosemary Corbin. I think that's important from the standpoint that everybody knows that they did not always get along. But it shares with you the impact they had on me and the relationship that they believe in, that I can bring folks together. And meaning even the present city council people that's sitting here, an ability to mend bridges and meet people where they are. I've been endorsed by future Congressman Latifah Simmons, State Senator-to-be Jesse Argurin. I've been endorsed by the Mayor Pinole, San Pablo, El Cerrito, Albany. All those folks have reached out and worked with me because of my relationship that I had with them regionally in bringing folks together, looking at the issues that impact our corridors, looking at the issues that impact our environment, looking at issues that impact affordable housing. And most importantly, my ability to be able to work with, no matter who you are, where you stand, on either side of the road. And also my knowledge and experience of having been an Economic Development Commissioner to understand that we need to have affordable housing, but we need to build green, really put into place the Blue-Green Deal, where we stop talking about the environment and doing what's right in the environment. I've lived in this community and they heard me. I played on the hill where Zeneca is when I was a kid. I'm an asthmatic today. I've lived between the freeways of 80 and Hoffman, as it used to be called, John Knox Highway. I've lived on Bourne and South 18th Street, a windsblow from Chevron. And all of those type of industries throughout the Bay Area and the state are always built in our black and brown bi-plot communities. So I hear people are talking about it now, but I'm a man of action. And those police, those people believe in action and democracy and action and Ahmaud Anderson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Anderson, Ms. Wilson, your response, please.
Okay, I'm gonna try not to leave anyone out, but apologies when I do. So in terms of local leadership, I'm proud to be endorsed, as I mentioned in my opening statement, by most of the, by many of the people who are currently leading in Richmond and county government. So our county supervisor, John Joya, is an important endorsement. I think that our current mayor, Eduardo Martinez. And then on city council, it's four of the, so in total, it's four of the seven current city council members, including Gail McLaughlin and Doria Robinson and Eduardo Martinez and Claudia Jimenez and Melvin Willis. So that's five of the seven, sorry. And then outside of the city, Tamisha Torres Walker, who is a community leader here in Richmond, but is also on Antioch City Council. And then also Devin Murphy, who's on Pinole City Council. And what I'm proud of is that it's a diverse community of leaders. I was very honored to hear from Tamisha Walker that one of the reasons that she supports me is that she knows I have a history of helping elevate women of color, especially black women, into leadership positions. And that's something I've done very consciously in my career. Glad it was recognized. In terms of institutional endorsements, I'm endorsed by all the city unions, so IFPTE 21 and SEIU 10 to 1. I'm endorsed by the Teachers Union, UTR, and the Firefighters Union, Local 188. I'm also endorsed by the Contra Costa County Labor Council. Again, like, the history of labor, fighting for working families, makes that very important to me, and I'm glad that they recognize that. I'm also endorsed by ACE for my housing policy. I'm endorsed because of my environmental policy by Sierra Club, APEN, LEED locally, and several others that I'm forgetting. And again, what it means to me, these endorsements, is that these are independent organizations who have looked at my record and decided they trust me to do what's right on the issues they care about. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This is going to be our last question for this round. Starting with you, Ms. Wilson, what specific initiatives do you propose to address the concerns that all voices are heard and represented in decision-making?
Thank you for the question. It's funny, Sean, or Mr. Dunning and I were chatting beforehand. And I think one thing we do agree on is that when people come together in person, it tends to be much more productive than when we try to hash things out online, particularly in social media. And so though I'm a big believer in having a social media presence and having an email newsletter and all these things that I know how to do, you know, one of the jobs I've had for many years as a labor person is communication. So I do have some skills in that. And I think digital communication is important, but there's a tendency for us to bring our fighting selves sometimes to our online discussions and our much more kinder selves to these in-person meetings. And so I would really like to lean into having more things. I mean, I know there's health concerns. I feel them too. So, but when it's possible and safe to do so, I really want us to lean into having more in-person meetings with an online component for folks who really can't make it. Including, my goodness, I really enjoyed, I went to all of the, in the district, the National Night Out meetings, you know, gatherings, and met tons of new people, and it was delightful. So I'm a big believer in that. I think, you know, one of the things I'm taking, I had a brief academic career. I did get a PhD. I'd never worked as an academic. But they have the concept of office hours. That's the idea, that you make yourself available on a set schedule so folks can walk in in person and meet with you. So if I'm elected, I'll say it here, I'm committed to doing a weekly office hour so that anybody who wants to can come and get in the queue and talk to me about whatever they want. Other than that, I think it's basically keeping a spirit of cooperation and a sense that all of us are, you know, whether we have differences in how to get there, I think we're all pulling in the same direction to try to make it a better city.
Thank you so much. Mr. Anderson, same question.
Well, one thing I do know, when I was doing some consulting for an organization, I happened to come to Councilperson Melvin and JL and Ben Choi to sit with them about small businesses. At that time, we had office hours at that time. And I think that's important. But like I mentioned before, I think it's important, as someone who's been in that people and culture and HR world, is that move from 80% behind your desk and move to that 80% to be in the community of the people and visit with them and see them as you can. It means going to the neighborhood councils. It means showing up in places they don't expect you to show up, to really be at the events that are happening, whether it be at East Shore, whether it be at Nickel Park, whether it be in the Marina. Be there and be present, but be authentic in the work that you do when you spend time for folks. Many of us are still working and will be doing this job. And so with that being said, you need to step up your game. You can't ask the people to always do it. You need to say to yourself, "I need to step up, and how can I be representative?" I've learned from my parents, one was a minister and one was a nurse, that you need to be able to walk with kings and queens, yet not lose the common touch. And I think that is what I'm committed to do with folks and what I do. I do that in the work I do at the Gardens of Golden Gate Park, the People and Culture. But the People and Culture Park, there are functions of HR. HR, I deal with being an empathetic leader about employee engagement, having office hours, talking about policies, procedures. And sometime, more importantly, I go out into the gardens and work along and see what people are doing as I would walk in the neighborhood to see what's going on and see what's happening. So I can then report back to my partners here on the council as to what I've seen, invite them to come see it as well. I think that it is not just talking about it, it's being about it. And we moved along, that we have people going back to work and being in place and in person. We can do that here as well.
Thank you so much, Mr. Anderson. Thank you for District 5 candidates. And we're gonna now move on to District 6. So we have Sean Dunning and Claudia Jimenez. I'm gonna say ladies first, and I'm gonna start with Claudia. I'm sorry, Ms. Jimenez, please give me your opening presentation.
Thank you so much. Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Claudia Jimenez, current Vice Mayor and City Council Member in District 6. I am a woman of color, a mother, an immigrant from Colombia, who did not speak any English when I moved here in 2007. I attended UC Berkeley and majored in environmental planning in 2009 to 2011. Shortly after that, I began organizing in the black and brown communities, facilitating and leading campaigns like Invest in People, No Prisons, and have worked alongside with many organizations and community members, some who are here today. My work in the county has led me to co-found LIPAC Contra Costa, a table of unions and community organizations that are working to make progress on racial justice and environmental health in Contra Costa. Encouraged by the Richmond residents, in 2020, I ran for office with a promise to improve city services without going into depth, and I am doing it. Under my leadership, Richmond has improved its credit rating twice in a year, eliminated wasteful loan practices that had saved the city over $80 million, increased revenue stream by taxing the largest corporation at a higher rate. Most importantly, we put tens of millions of more dollars into the budget to improve services such as the full renovation of the library, new sport fields and renovation of park bathrooms, traffic calming measures to make our roads and sidewalks safety, a new team of trained professionals to respond to mental health crisis calls. We increased our investment in crime prevention programs, and in 2023, we saw Richmond homicide rate fall to the low record. Last month, I was part of the Ad-Hoc Committee that got Chevron to agree to pay the city an additional $1.5 billion in taxes over the next year. And I wanted to make sure that we don't mix that candidates like me that don't receive corporate money to make corporations pay their first share to the city so we have the means to serve the community better. So between Measure U and the Chevron settlement, we had been able to increase our revenue by $100 million over the four years that I had been in office. We achieved this working together as a diverse coalition of resident community organizations, unions, small businesses, city staff, and my fellow council members. Member Willis is here. And I hope that you will reelect me for Richmond City Council in 2024 so we can continue to move our city forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jimenez. Mr. Dunning, your opening statement, please.
I'm gonna tell you who I am by explaining why I'm here. And it starts with a question. Do you feel that your voice really matters in local politics today? Not that it should. Of course, it should. But do you feel that it matters if you speak up? I believe it can, and I believe it will when we have enough of our leaders committed to serving the needs of all the people, not just their group. Now, don't get me wrong. Once upon a time, it made sense to fight the good fight. But it doesn't need to be a fight anymore. One of my mentors, late Congressman John Lewis, would often say, "We all live in the same house, the American house." I think it's time we bring that mindset to Richmond. I intend to work for all of us. That means I will listen to you and I will listen to people who see things differently. And I will do everything I can to help us work towards solutions that satisfy as many needs as possible. And I know it's possible because I've seen what we humans are capable of. You know, I'm a fourth-generation Bay Area native, but I didn't grow up here. I grew up in the world, and I learned from the world. For two decades, my career involved conflict resolution and peacebuilding in divided societies all over the globe, from the Middle East to East Timor, Indonesia to Kosovo, North Carolina to Northern California. And I want to bring those lessons here to Richmond. My heart is here. My daughters are growing up here. And I want to do everything I can to build a brighter future for all of us. You might wonder how I'm gonna do that. Well, I'll give you a clue. It has nothing or not much to do with the one out of seven votes I would have up here. But it has everything to do with the convening power of my city council role that I will use to invite stakeholders and experts to co-create solutions we've never thought of before. With a diverse array of perspectives at the table and without anyone owning the table, we'll get things done like never before. And we'll come closer to reaching our extraordinary potential that this city holds. You know, two years ago, I traveled over 500 miles on foot through the streets of Richmond, and I met 5,000 people along the way. And to sum it up, here's what I heard. Everyone dreams of a Richmond that is safe, clean, and fair for all. So what does that mean? It means renters are afforded reasonable protections and mom-and-pop housing providers are afforded reasonable protections. It means we have enough police of the right kind and that everyone feels equally protected and trusting of the police. It means businesses pay their fair share of taxes and the businesses are treated fairly. Those are just a few examples. But it's possible to build a future that works for everyone, and I can't wait to get started. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Dunning, and we'll go ahead and start with you. What can Richmond do to enhance and develop the economy within the city?
So when you look at our economy, you got to look at our budget. Overall budget's about 500 million a year, half of that, about 249 something, is general funds, things that we can make decisions about. We need money to do any of the things that anyone up here talks about, and that's what economy is all about. What's the vitality of our economy looking like? And that has to do with jobs, it has to do with how much money is coming in here. And if you look at our revenue pie, a solid half or more of that is businesses. If we don't treat our businesses fairly, our economy suffers, not only because we aren't getting the taxes, both sales tax and property tax that come from business, but also jobs. So if we can attract and support more healthy business growth in Richmond of all sorts of businesses, especially the ones we really want, that would be places for convening, places for shopping, places for social interaction, but also imagine, you know, let's up the game on high tech where we can actually have jobs right here, you're not having to commute across the bay or elsewhere. It all starts with how we treat our businesses. There's been a lot of talk about Measure U. There's absolutely nothing wrong with the idea of gross receipts tax, nothing unfair about that at all, as long as the percentage is appropriate. You'll often hear that the voters passed Measure U with 72%. I guarantee you, if you go and interview any voter and ask them what they think they voted for, they think they voted for more police, more street repair, more youth programs, et cetera. They didn't read all the fine print because you got to go look that up, wasn't on the ballot. But the fine print led to things like car dealerships in Richmond going from paying a business license fee of 14,000 to over 1 million overnight. That is not fair. Should businesses pay their fair tax? Yes, that's not fair.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dunning. Ms. Jimenez, I almost said Martinez, goodness. Ms. Jimenez, your answer, please.
Gracias. So one of the things that I did, I led with Gail McGlaughlin, the Green and Blue New Deal. And this report is finished and is coming soon to the city, and it's going to give us a blueprint for how we can invest in good green technology. So we are already doing that, and I have been leading that effort. With the money that we have from, like we are going to have from Chevron, it's a great opportunity to have them means to be investing in these green businesses. I know all the businesses, we don't want all the businesses, we want businesses that promote life, that don't pollute this community. We had been in a community that had been polluted for social, like the high rate of asthma. So we need green businesses that promote life and help, like for instance, like we have a shoreline that like a lot of sites are contaminated. So we need some business, promote businesses to do that cleanup. But also, I just wanted to talk about Measure U. Measure U was passed by the majority of city residents and is gross received. And it's so, meaning that if you have less, you pay less, and if you have more, you have more. I had been in the ad hoc committee dealing with the car dealership, and yes, there are some parts that we need to improve and we will be doing it. But just kind of like with that, we just have new car dealership coming to Hilltop. So if it were bad for car dealership, we won't have new businesses coming here. In my term in San Pablo Avenue, four new businesses came, had been new open in there. So we are doing what we have to promote and support businesses. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jimenez. Thank you, candidates, for looking at that clock and not making me yell at you. Mr. Dunning, next question, which, I'm sorry, Richmond Neighborhood Councils used to have a significant role in advising the city council and city departments. What do you think the role of neighborhood council should be?
I love this question because it's why I'm here, to try to give voice to the people. And if you look at the history of neighborhood councils in Richmond, it goes back to the 60s. It's really fascinating. It was leading the way in the country for this concept. And the idea was dispersed councils of people in their neighborhood through which there's a two-way street connection to our city council. So imagine any decisions being made by the council members up here, they're first conferring with the actual community through these neighborhood councils. That's, in theory, the way it's supposed to work. Unfortunately, that's not the way it's working in Richmond. I take Sue's point well, that the neighborhood councils are not very well populated, and that's not to take away from the extraordinary work that a lot of our volunteers are doing. They pour their heart and soul into it, they deserve a lot of respect, but people aren't showing up. You know, there's about 20,000 people in my district, and our neighborhood council meetings are populated by about 12 people. So it's not representative. But I think the most important question is why? And my analysis of that is that the average person in Richmond doesn't feel that their voice really matters to our elected officials. And the neighborhood councils are just seen as an extension of that. Why would you get involved? Why would, people are busy, got a lot going on. Why would you dedicate your nights to go to these meetings? And again, I don't want to take away from the people that do, because thank you, but in general, why would you do it if you just feel like you're going to raise your concern and it's going to be ignored? Because that's the track record of what's been going on in recent years around here. Our neighborhood councils poured their heart into making recommendations for how we would do the redistricting after the census in 2020. It was completely ignored. When they cut our police budget three years ago, our neighborhood councils were up in arms. That's not what we want. It was completely ignored.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mr. Dunning. Ms. Jimenez, your answer, please.
Yeah, I believe the neighborhood council is a great structure and infrastructure that we have in the city to get our communities involved. But I agree also that we need more engagement, because I go to other cities' events, for instance, like communities, organizations that do events, say Ritten Project, APEN, many other organizations, even Latina Center, and I see more people participating than in the neighborhood council. So it's not like also that the community doesn't want to participate, it's how we engage them in the participation. And I think like this is something that we need to do to make sure that like the neighborhood council are partnering with other organizations that are doing work so we can bring these forces that are working in the community in many different places into working together. And instead of just working kind of like in silos, trying to get the people to participate in my meeting. I was a community organizer here, and I used to work with the black and brown churches. We had meetings where 400 people in Richmond show up. So it's not like the lack of engagement, it's how you get people, you meet people where they are and start talking about what the issues that they care about are being here and are being discussed in these forums. So I think like another thing that I will say is that we will need more information, more transparency from these groups. One thing that I had been asking is what are the bylaws and rules when people get elected? And I haven't received that much information from the people who are there, because we need to know how these people are elected, how is the process, so transparency also is important. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jimenez. And we're actually going to start the next question with you. So what do you see as the responsibility of a council member in ensuring a safe community? And how do you see that being accomplished? Safe community?
Yeah. So safe has been a key part of what we have been working in the city council. And the idea is to, as council or candidates, Wilson mentioned, is a holistic approach of public safety. Because we understand that communities and represented communities and undefended communities like Richmond had been led for so long with just the police to call. And we are in this process of making sure that the people are, have so many other services. Like we are, like the Office of Neighborhood Safety is a leading program that had demonstrated results in preventing and reducing gun violence in the city. We are now investing and putting money into the Community Crisis Response Program so people have another resource to be served in ways that one, only one department cannot do that. And we created 500 youth jobs for young adults in the city of Richmond. And I am committed to continue to advocate for going to the root cause of violence and addressing that issue so we can have a city that continues to make the improvements and the results in the data that we are having until right now. I am a mom of a 16-years-old boy that wants to go out and have fun, and sometimes the city of Richmond doesn't present that opportunity. This is why I advocated for the library and the recreation center to be open on Saturdays, because it wasn't even open on the weekends where the families can go. And I will continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dunning.
I just want to say, I don't disagree with anything that Councilmember Jimenez just said with regard to values and what's important and what we need. And if you go around and talk to anyone in Richmond, as I did, to 5,000 people, the number one topic that came up, when I asked, open-ended, what's important? What do you need? What's on your mind? If I get elected, what do you want me to know? The number one response has to do with safety every single time, or at least nine times out of 10. And that has to do with street safety. Sorry, you caught me a lie there. Has to do with street safety, cars racing around at 70 miles an hour, knowing that there's no one there to pull them over, it's just a free-for-all around here. It has to do with property safety. It's great that homicides are down, no question about that, like let's all celebrate that. But I talked to a lot of folks who have been here all their lives, I've talked to people in their 70s, 80s, been here all their lives, and they say they feel less safe now than when there were 90 murders a year or 60 murders a year. I mean, that's a horrible thing to consider in contrast, but you ask them why, and they say, well, years ago, I felt like if I called the police, they would be there. I didn't feel like I had to watch my car all night to make sure the catalytic converter wasn't stolen. That's not just a rich person issue, that's for everybody, especially if you can't afford to replace a catalytic converter. These have to do with police. Now, police are not the answer to everything, and guess who agrees with that? The police. They will tell you, they love the idea of crisis response units for receiving, for handling calls that don't need a badge and a gun. So there's a lot of common ground here, we agree. The challenge is, how do we go about achieving this? Because the reality of a lot of people that were pushing the policy back in 2021 is they simply don't want police, and that's not an exaggeration. If you look up into the details, it's what they're saying. I find that kind of sad. I think we need to understand their needs and make sure those needs are being addressed, too. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Dunning, and we'll start with Ms. Jimenez again for the next question. Which political endorsements have you received so far? And how do you, how do these endorsements reflect your campaign's values and priorities?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for that question. I have been endorsed by Latifah Simons, who just spoke at the DNC and is running for Barbara Lee Seed, Supervisor John Joya, five of the city councils, like four of the current city councils, the mayor, and many, many residents in District Six who has been doing house parties, had been canvassing with me, door knocking, putting their yard signs. So you are going to see a lot of yard signs in my district with my face. So thank you so much to everybody who has been, is being supportive of me. But also, I have been endorsed by many organizations like the Contra Costa Labor Council, the Firefighter Local 188, that actually put money in the last election to attack me and attack Councilmember Willis in our last campaign. But now they see how I can work with them to make Richmond better. I had been also endorsed by FPTA Local 21, SEIU 1021, NUSW, and many, many other organizations, including the Young Democrats, who the new branch of the Democrats sees me as the candidate who is going to bring forward the needs of young folks. So I had been endorsed, like the list is really long, so I won't have that much time, but SEIU, CIR, and proud to say that USW Local 5, the union that represents Chevron's workers, has seized me as the candidate for this election. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jimenez. Mr. Dunning, the same question.
Let me start by just saying, yard signs don't vote, but if you see one of my yard signs, you can guarantee that someone actually reached out and asked for it. But in any case, the endorsements, my longest list of endorsements are my neighbors throughout District Six. If you go on my website and look, you'll see just a lot of names, and you probably won't even recognize a lot of them, because they're just everyday people who live in District Six. After that would be community leaders, folks like John Marquez, former council member, Yenny Garcia, the 23rd Street Merchants Association, former mayors and council members of Richmond. A lot of folks that have been around understand what Richmond needs and are putting their voice behind me. I'm also endorsed by all the mayors of the cities that surround Richmond and several council members as well. I'm endorsed by the Contra Costa Building Trades Council and several of the unions within, including the boilermakers and plumbers and steam fitters and carpenters. I'm endorsed by Berkeley Mayor Jesse Arigane, state senate candidate. Just today, I received the endorsement from California Treasurer Fiona Ma. And I mean, this is frankly, without even really getting out there and asking, I don't spend my time trying to shop for endorsements, but I'm honored to have them. And I think what that means is people understand what's going on, they understand what I have to bring, and they're really excited about it. And, you know, I understand that my message is sometimes difficult to get in a soundbite when it comes to what collaborative leadership is all about. But when I meet people, they get it and they get behind me, and I'm really excited to have all that support.
All right. Thank you so much. District Six, this is your last question. Mr. Dunning, what specific initiatives do you propose to address the concerns that all voices are heard and represented in decision-making?
So that is why I'm here. My tagline is "Your Richmond, Your Voice." And you know, when I ran for mayor two years ago, got second place, but when I did that, you know what the biggest criticism was? The biggest criticism I heard was that I listened too much. It's true. And if you think about that, unpack that a little bit, what people are saying is, Sean, why don't you take a stand? You got to fight, and all this stuff. It's great. But what I'm here to do is first, always first, to listen. And people who are supporting me know that. People who voted for me last time know that, and people who are voting for me this time know that. Now, it does beg the question, great, you listen, and then what? So I'm going to back that up with a lot of really hard work. And I've already shown how hard I'm willing to work by personally going to 8,000 doors in my district to invite people to reach out, not even to tell them to vote for me, just to give them my contact information and say, I want to support you. And when I meet people who are clearly supporting somebody else, I have the same conversation. I don't even change anything I say. And I say, here's my phone number. I really want you to feel comfortable reaching out to me anytime, especially after the election. I want to represent the people of Richmond, the people of District Six directly. That's going to take a lot of work. It's not a matter of just polling people to see if they want something, yes or no, but I do intend to create a, basically a council advisory group of sorts. As many people as want can be on it, and if you want to be involved, because not everybody does, but if you want to be involved, I will do my very best to reach out and share what's going on, to get input, and not just to hear if you're saying yes or no on something, but why. Because it's when we understand the reasons that we disagree and have different perspectives, we can co-create win-win solutions. That's my craft, that's my trade, that's been in my career for over 20 years, and I can't wait to get started here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunning. Ms. Jimenez?
Yeah, so as a community organizer, I have been working with many, many community members here in Richmond and in Contra Costa County, and throughout, not only the Contra Costa, but throughout the region. When I started city council, one of the things that I started doing was sending a newsletter to let people know what we had been doing and how they can reach me. But also, when people were reaching me, I was like, okay, can we meet? But also, when people were reaching, reaching me, I was like, "Okay, can, can we meet?" And this is how, like, I got Elizabeth Kurod and Keith Ambarre to hold a meeting to have the, talk to me, and I invited the public work directors to talk about what were the issues that they were having. And this is why I moved $1.2 million and we started the traffic calming program. And now it's going to be a division because we understood what the community was saying. The same thing with Heather in, on Solano, where she organized a house party and a house meeting where we talk about the issues in Solano. And I invited them all to make public comments, and that is how the city staff is starting to, is making some work in that area as well. So bringing people together has been the work that I have been doing, and this is why I was asked to run in the first place. And I had been representing and I had been available to work with everybody. But I also want to, to think, like, really quickly, that one of the things that I am working on and is coming pretty soon to the city is that we need to brought the idea of who can vote in Richmond. So everybody who is resident in Richmond can vote, and this will be expanding the participation of everybody in Richmond. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jimenez. Thank you to all the candidates. So now, we are gonna go into our lightning round, and this is what I will suggest to you candidates. We have a, a list of questions that we are gonna ask. You're gonna get 30 seconds to answer them. I suggest you only give one word. And if, and, and the shorter your answer is, the more of these questions we get through. But if you all take 30 seconds for the first one, we're only gonna get through one. Okay? So I'm gonna start from the, in the middle and work my way out. Mr. Anderson, what is the most important issue facing Richmond?
Economic development.
Mr. Willis?
Economic development, I'm sorry.
Okay. Mr. Willis?
Living wage jobs.
Okay. Mr. Wasberg?
Bringing in businesses so people have a good trade and make a lot of money.
Thank you. Dr. Brown?
Safety across all platforms, safety is number one. Until we get that understood, then we can't have anything going accordingly.
Thank you, Ms. Jimenez.
Improving community access like parks, recreation centers, and every space that is being used to provide services for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Dunning.
Safety.
Thank you. And Ms. Wilson?
Environmental health. We need to clean up the toxic waste on our shoreline and clean up our polluted air.
Thank you so much. Next question, I'm gonna start on the end and work my way back. Dr. Brown, do you support Measure U?
Yes, I support Measure U, and no, I don't support Measure U. I'm in the middle.
Okay. Thank you for that. Mr. Wasberg?
No, because it's destroying big businesses, because the businesses are paying three, seven, eight folds on taxes, because this is what the RPA wants. They want to destroy big businesses. They have some dumb idea that all these small businesses is gonna make up the difference.
Okay. Mr. Willis?
Yes, I support Measure U.
You're so good, Melvin. Mr. Anderson?
I don't support Measure U. Economic Development Commissioner, want to see where the money is, what the impact is, what we've retained, what we have brought in, and what are we doing with to move forward to improve it?
Thank you, Ms. Wilson?
Yes, because voters voted for Measure U because it lowers taxes for the smallest businesses and puts fair taxes on the largest businesses.
Thank you, Mr. Dunning.
I support the theory of the structure of Measure U, but not the existing numbers within it.
Thank you, Ms. Jimenez. Whoop, did you say something else? No? Okay. Ms. Jimenez?
Yes, voters voted for it, and it has been great for the business here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next question, I'll start with Ms. Jimenez. Which voting initiative do you support? Rank choice, primary runoff, or status quo?
I voted to put rank choice in, on the ballot, so I, yes, and I don't support RERA. Thank you.
Mr. Dunning?
Over 10,000 people put the primary option on the ballot. Seven people sitting up here put the ranked choice option on the ballot. Ranked choice in theory makes sense for a mathematician. In practice, it doesn't turn out the way it often is intended to. And there's a poison pill in Richmond's Measure U, which is even if it passes, you may end up, we, our, our city council may decide that we can't actually afford to implement it.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Wilson?
I support ranked choice voting because it gives you the benefits of a runoff election, but does it in one election in November, so more people participate. I oppose RERA, the primary system, because 10,000 people in Richmond do not, they vote in November, but they don't vote in our primaries, which take place in March or June. And we do not want to disenfranchise those folks with the primary system.
Mr. Anderson?
Don't support ranked, ranked choice. I'm a primary individual. I'd say ranked choice lacks the education and awareness. It's like any mini mini mo, and that's not how government should go.
All right. Mr. Willis?
Because the past couple of primary elections, I had to pull teeth to try to get people to vote for the black, the first black woman district attorney in Contra Costa's history, and there was still people saying, "Nah, I'm cool, I'm voting." I support ranked choice because at least we can guarantee the maximum amount of voters are going to turn out and make their voices heard.
All right. Mr. Wasberg?
I believe everybody has the right to run for office long as they, they're qualified. All right? Because the problem is, now, you're gonna say, "Well, whoever gets the most votes out of these two people," you know, you're gonna go forward. But, but the problem is, that's gonna eliminate some of the people. So I figure we just go ahead and, and go ahead and rest, be a vote, be a voter, and run for office, and let it be, the people decide who they want into office. Because you have the right to run for office if you qualify.
Thank you, Mr. Wasberg. Dr. Brown?
I support ranked choice voting.
Thank you so much. We'll start from the middle again with the next question. Mr. Anderson, do you support the refinery tax?
So, I, I don't support, I'd support the refinery tax. However, I still believe that although we're moving in the right direction to make sure folks pay their, pay their pollutant tax, I do believe that there needs to be oversight as to where that money goes. And we need to hold people accountable, those who make the decisions here, but also those to health and welfare the community.
Ms. Wilson?
I did support the make polluters pay refinery tax when that was being planned for the November ballot. I thought it was a great idea, but I'm really happy that because Chevron felt the pressure of the organizing around that measure, they agreed to pay a half billion dollars to the city in taxes without having to take that to a ballot measure. So just to clarify, I supported the original measure. It held Chevron's feet to the fire, and then there was an agreement, which I also supported.
Mr. Dunning?
Yeah, it's a non-sequitur because it's not a, a tax on the ballot anymore. I will say that if, if I was on council and a measure was brought to me that would ensure that the air coming, coming out of Chevron was cleaner as a result of what we're voting on, I would absolutely 100% get beyond, behind that. Now, that's not what it was about, it was disingenuous. Chevron gave us 550 million. That's great. I mean, we'll take it. They gave it to us to make us go away and leave them alone for 10 years. It's not sustainable.
Thank you, Mr. Dunning. And you are correct. The question was actually, "Did you support?" Not, "Do you support?" But, Ms. Jimenez, Ms. Jimenez, did you support the refinery tax?
Yeah, I co-authored that with Eduardo Martinez, the mayor. And let me tell you, it wasn't for making reduction in pollution. That is not on the table to negotiate or get millions of dollars instead of then reducing pollution. We want then to reduce pollution. But this was not about that. It was about to increase the taxes and increase revenue in the city so we can have the means to have the money for a just transition from a green, for a, for a fossil fuel economy to a green economy.
So, thank you so much, Ms. Jimenez. Dr. Brown?
Yes, I supported initially polluters pay. However, we can't tax our way out of things, and I hear so much on everyone's wish list about the settlement, which is going into the general fund. So which further lets me know that we need to get that advisory board on the way so we can actually know where those funds will be placed.
Okay. Mr. Wasberg?
No, all this, all this lies about Chevron causing asthma and polluting Richmond. It's all a bunch of pack of lies by the RPA. All they're, they want to come up here and tell the people and brainwash the people that all these children get asthma, we need to put them inside the buildings, all these children are dying. It's all a bunch of pack of lies, because what they want to do, they want to tax big businesses. This is why big businesses are not moving here to Richmond. It's all a bunch of pack of lies by the radical idiots on the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Wasberg. Mr. Willis?
Yes, I did support the refinery tax.
You did support the refinery tax. Thank you very much. All right. So very last question, I'll start actually with you, Mr. Willis. Do you support the Richmond Rent Board policies?
Yes, I support the Richmond Rent Board policies.
Thank you, Mr. Wasberg.
First of all, you have to be careful about the rent control because you don't want to destroy the real estate market. You destroy the real estate market, you're gonna destroy Richmond. And we know for a fact that the RPA is out to destroy the real estate market, because they're just a bunch of radicals, and everybody knows what they're doing. I mean, I mean, this is totally ridiculous, because the problem is, you're gonna have people, the landlords are gonna suffer on, on this rent control.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wasberg. Dr. Brown? Do you support the Richmond Rent Board policies?
Yes, I support the Richmond Rent Board policies, however, still have some sensitivity towards mom-and-pop landlords here in Richmond that they also need support.
Thank you, Ms. Jimenez.
Yes, I support the policies of the rent program.
Thank you, Mr. Wa, I'm sorry, Mr. Dunning. It's, it's late, you know? We don't have these, we don't have these late city council meetings.
I support, I support the principles of rent control and just cause for eviction. I believe Richmond's current approach to that is over the top, and it's leading to fewer rental units being on the market because of it. So I don't support the way it's being implemented in Richmond, but I support the principles of it.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
I do support our current rent control and eviction policies because it's the best tool we have for keeping people in their homes, preventing homelessness, and also displacement to faraway communities far from where they work.
Thank you. And Mr. Anderson?
For someone who's lived in his community all his life, to know that gentrification is taking place, that renters have been impacted, that African-Americans have been impacted, that we need reasonable rent control. As a person who's on the board, a fancy, which is fair housing, advocates for Northern California, that stands up for renters, stands up against discrimination, I know personally the impact of what is done. I'm one of few that's lived here in the city of Richmond, as I look at the council all their life, and have seen it come and seen it go. And so we need reasonable common sense.
Thank you so much, Mr. Anderson. And I want to thank all the candidates. You all have an embarrassment of riches with so many great candidates here in Richmond. Permission to clap this one time? Okay, so now we will go into our closing candidate remarks, and since we started on the far end of the dais, we're gonna start with you, Ms. Jimenez. You, you all have two minutes for your closing statements.
Thank you. Gracias a todos y a todas. I am running once again for city council because I believe local government can be a force for good in people's everyday life. I believe that public resources must be protected and, and used to uplift the community, especially those who have been marginalized. As a progressive, I am a dreamer. I will never stop dreaming about ways we can make this a better world. And I'm also very practical and goal-oriented. As a mother, I will continue to advocate for young people to continue to have opportunities available, available to them to increase their health and social well-being, improve the recreation and park services, continue to invest in street safety, and support green businesses to transition away from fossil fuel economy, and revitalize the poor to use it in its full potential. We can do this and accomplish much more. I have proven to be an effective city council member. There is still much more that we need to do to improve the, the lives of every Richmond resident, and I continue to ensure that this happens if I am elected. So please, elect me, Claudia Jimenez, for Richmond City Council in District 6. A mother, a city council right now, and an immigrant from Colombia who brings all that into the fold of who we are in Richmond. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunning.
I, I want to thank the organizers who put this together. I want to thank everyone who's up here. I think anyone who decides to get involved in public service deserves respect, and I say that even to the person I disagree with the most. And that's coming from a standpoint of having a career and a passion for conflict resolution and collaborative problem solving. I know that if we're gonna find the best, most creative breakthrough solutions to the most pervasive challenges we face, we've got to do things differently. We've got to leverage the diversity that we have, and if you want to think about the riches of Richmond, it's diversity. It's people from all walks of life. And if we want to come up with great solutions, we need to leverage that. We can't just do it from one way of thinking. No leader, regardless of expertise or experience, is gonna come up with great ideas on their own. And I will be very proud to say, if I have the honor, the privilege to serve you, I will be very proud to say every time we find a breakthrough solution, that it wasn't my idea. But if I take credit for anything, I'll take the credit for inviting people to the table who no one else invited. And I believe, I have a sense of faith, that we will find breakthrough ideas when we start to work together. We just need leaders who hold the space for doing that. And I don't, I'm not, when I say that, I'm not taking away from all the people who have put their heart and soul into this. Everyone, I, I really think they mean best. I really think when they're fighting the good fight, they're doing it for the right reasons. I just think it's time for us to evolve and to realize that we're all in this together. And like John Lewis would say, "We're all in the same house." So I'm not planning to be the one to bring extreme ideas to council. I'm planning to be the one who listens to them coming from left and right and up and down, and being the one to say, "Hey, let's sit down and talk, and let's figure this out, because I know we can." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
I think some things are worth fighting for. Civil rights, for instance. The environment. We have the highest asthma rates in the county in Richmond, and that's directly tied to particulate matter that Chevron is put into the air. And to clarify, the fight over pollution with Chevron is not over. The fact that we are taxing them doesn't mean that we're not gonna fight them to clean up their act and make our kids and our families safe. My background is in the labor movement. What I bring to the table is an ability to put people together and to organize them, not just to talk, but to fight for themselves, to identify the things that they think are right, and to do what they need to do to get that stuff done. I'm unapologetic about that. I don't think having a fighting spirit is a bad thing, especially in a town like Richmond. Once upon a time, this was such a refinery town, such a company town, that Chevron actually had its own desk inside of City Hall, so that people in city government could run their ideas by Chevron before they tried to implement them. That is no longer the case, and I think there's a temptation to say, "Those days are over, we don't need to fight anymore." But the truth is, is that unless voters continue to elect people who refuse to take contributions from large corporations, including Chevron, we could very, very easily return to those days. So I call on you to support someone like me, who is a non-corporate candidate. And if elected, I just want to say that my top priorities are cleaning up the AstraZeneca site. We do not want to cap it and build housing on top of the toxic waste. I also want to be a good steward of the additional Chevron settlement money. We should save some, we should spend some on the environment, and we should use the rest to improve city services, including making Carlson a safer and more attractive city. Huge issue in District 5. Thank you. I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Ahmaud Anderson is the native son of the city of Richmond, born to two, two of the strongest leaders of the city, Irma L. Anderson and Booker T. Anderson, both served mayor and city council. They brought forth the transit village of Richmond and the park station. They brought forth social security here. But we also need to be able to work from Ahmaud Anderson. I'm not the minister, and I'm not the nurse, but I'm a man of action, working with the support of the Buildings and Trades, working with the support of 23rd Street Merchants. Economic development is a public health issue. Economic development talks about the jobs that Councilwoman, um, Anderson spoke to. Economic development talks about having the energy and the necessary needs to take care of pollution in this community. Economic development talks about how we work with our schools and liaison and Buildings and Trades and internships and apprenticeships to put forth workforce development. Those are the things that are important in this world. I think that in the world of the city, we also talk about affordable housing. It's a crisis. That's a public health issue. We talk about the unhoused, and what are we doing there? We hear a lot of talk, but there's no action. In my ability as an economic development commissioner, I've worked with East Bay Economic Development Agency. I've worked with A-BAG. I've worked with Transit, AC Transit, and BART. And most importantly, I've worked with our neighbors to make this a better quality of life. And I'm not even elected. I'm just getting started. So I have to say that it's you, me, we, us together that makes a difference. And I have to say to you, I agree. The money is great for Chevron, but we have to have a plan. We have to be transparent. There are bills we have to play. There's unfunded liabilities. So people are getting paid today, but we don't have the appropriate staffing. We don't have the appropriate infrastructure. Our streets are not just Carlson. The city needs help. I'm that person for you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Please silence in the chambers, Mr. Wilson, Willis. I'm giving everybody the wrong.
It's all good. Wilson, Willis, what you want to call me? Yeah, I'll say, yeah, thank you, everybody, for taking time out of your evening just to join this candidates forum and actually fill up the audience chamber. I'm glad we're actually talking to people this year and not talking to a Zoom screen. You know, reflecting just on the past seven and a half years after being sworn in office, I just kind of reminded myself that, especially just surrounded by so many people that have such strong roots in the community, I'm just reminded that I essentially came from nothing in a single-family household. And when I did got involved in politics, it was because I just was fighting for community members who wanted to see a change, whether it was investing in housing, keeping homeowners in their homes, tenants sheltered, youth programs, living wage jobs, immigrant rights, access to health coverage, or just general services. For me, it just was about working with those community members and representing the integrity of their voices and what they want to see change in the city. Most of the things I work on don't really have a direct benefit to me, but when I sit as an organizer with ACE, or even as a council member or facilitator of the Racial Justice Coalition for Contra Costa County, I'm always reminding myself that I am representing more than just myself and my opinion. And I always want to honor the integrity of those who I'm representing. And that's why I continue to run. Richmond has come a long way, and I'm happy about that. In 2021, I know our operating budget was, for services, was 188 million. And we ended the last year's budget with 225 million in the budget. And with that settlement, it's actually going to go up. I also want to shout out to UTR, who's also endorsed me, John Joya, the Young Dems, Eduardo Martinez, and I do want to shout out Ivanka Beckles, the next Senate Seven, uh, Senate Seven Senator. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. Mr. Wasberg?
Well, right now, we have a chance to put a major dent in the RPA. We know for a fact that the RPA, the city council, stood with Hamas. They stood with the Palestinian flag, sponsored terrorism and hate. They defunded the police. They stood with the BLM and Antifa when it was burning down America. Here's the list. They'd rather build homeless shelters than create jobs and opportunity. The homicide rate ever since the RPA took over has quadrupled in the Iron Triangle. 300, 370 homicides, 95% blacks killing blacks. This is no joke. I've been there, I've seen it. The bottom line is, the RPA does not respect any of our constitutional laws. They're, they're for the budget, budget anarchists. They've admitted that they're a social democratic communist regime. Bernie Sanders came down here and was campaigning for these people. You think it's funny? This is no joke. These people rather support criminals. They're, they're sitting there having all these illegal immigrants pouring in our country. Willis over here, he wants to get rid of ICE. He already defunded the police. He even admitted it. The bottom line is, people, we need to get these people out of office. We need to have a new government here that's going to respect our constitutional laws. Not one time has the RPA even admitted supporting our constitutional laws. This is why people are scared because they defunded the police. They have some stupid idea that they're going to bring all these social workers to go down and confront these thugs that's carrying around AK Usis and MacDens. It ain't going to happen. Even the Richmond PD admitted that every time the task force goes there, the police has to go with them. The bottom line is, we need to get these three people out. Don't put these people in office.
Thank you, Mr. Wasberg. Dr. Brown?
Thank you again to everyone who took time to join us tonight. I've been, this is an absolute honor, to say the least, to share my vision for District One and the future of Richmond with you all. Throughout this campaign, I've been deeply inspired by the passion and dedication of residents who, like me, believe in the tremendous potential of our community and are committed to creating meaningful lasting change. District One deserves better. As we move forward, remember this election is about more than just words. It's about action and real progress. Votes aren't given, they're earned. And I'm here to earn your trust and your support. I want to remind you that the power to shape our future rests in your hands tonight. If you aren't already registered, please take that first step. It's the gateway to amplifying your voice. Turn out to the polls and encourage your neighbors to do the same. Because that's how we reshape our city and create a Richmond that is safer, more engaged, and economically resilient. I cannot stress enough that we must return Richmond back into the hands of its residents, ensuring our city reflects the shared values, dreams, and aspirations of the people who actually live here. I am fully committed to serving as your District One representative, a leader who listens, take action, and prioritize the needs of our community. Again, Dr. Jamila Brown and I am running for Richmond City Council, District One.
All right. Thank you so much again to the candidates. We want to thank our co-hosts WAPA, Richmond's Chamber of Converse, the Richmond branch of the NAACP, the League of Women Voters, West Contra Costa County, and to KCRT for making this forum possible. Thank you for attending. I did it all by 7:59.